Welcome out. We'll start today with the indication of the pledge and do that by the head of this.
Father, heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank for this school, the faculty, staff, and students, and what they mean to this community. We ask you today as we address the business of college, you guys give us wisdom, and then we do nothing that will not be considered in you, and we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Okay, what we're rolling today at the, uh, number one, uh, consideration approval of November agenda.
We want to approve.
We have a motion there, second. Second, motion, second, we need discussion. We can vote at this time. All those in favor of approving the November agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Move on to number two, consideration and approval of minutes of the October board meeting.
Motion we approve of this presented.
We've had a motion, there's a second.
What's second?
Any discussion on that? If not, this is also a force to vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes for that October board meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approval of the, uh, November fourth special meeting.
Motion is third.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, we discussed that. If not, we'll vote to approve the minutes from that meeting. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody vote? Very good. We'll can move on to, uh, item number three, the consideration of the college financial report. Thank you.
Alright, okay, it's ten, uh, before we look at our September financial statements compared to last September. Um, very similar to what you've seen in previous months. We have, uh, a, a, a good start on our fall enrollment, of course, and the very beginning of some of our spring enrollment. Uh, so we've got a strong tuition position there. Um, the other item on call, your attention to is the other operating revenue is the fourth line down. Um, you see there was nothing in that category last year at this time. Uh, that is because that is where the insurance proceeds from the tornado damage is. Then on the next page, uh, you will see, uh, also, the expense side of that is going to be kind of buried in those operating expenses. We haven't had any really huge ones, um, related to the damage on the tornado yet. Uh, uh, in, in September, we paid a really big chunk in October, so you'll see that, um, in the next month. Other than that, uh, expenses are very comparable to, to last year, very similar to what you've seen in previous months. On page twelve, you see our revenues minus expenses, we're in a little bit better position than we were at the same time last year, so that's pretty. Uh, turning then to page fifteen, we look at our budget to actual, put these equivalent numbers for October, but, um, you'll see again in the other operating revenue, uh, you see that's quite high, uh, amount there, two million of that, two million eighty-one thousand is, uh, insurance proceeds. And then likewise, on the bottom half of that page, your operating demands, plant category, uh, you can see that also is quite high because you did pay, um, a pretty good chunk, uh, to contractors, uh, for that ongoing repairs in October. Other than that, um, other categories are very routine, uh, again, similar to what you've seen in, uh, in previous months. Following that then, uh, and looking at our capital budget on page seventeen, again, you see, uh, several of our projects that we have ongoing. Uh, we have, uh, purchased the nephrology clinic, uh, that's on Tewors Boulevard and, uh, continue work, uh, on the, uh, parking lots at Y-Bond and the renovation of the baseball club. Following that, and then we've got our cash and banks, uh, the pie graph on page nineteen. Uh, this is a relatively high point for cash in that, uh, we have collected a pretty good chunk of our fall enrollment, which is the larger of the two, as well as, uh, we've started processing that fault on mutual aid, so we've been able to make those drawings from the federal government. So, uh, sitting in a good position there. Um, investments, we still have our certificate of deposit with Southern Bank, uh, it's a twelve years CD, or sorry, twelve months CD, uh, so that will not be, uh, that will not mature till next summer. And then we do not have any bids to report that are outstanding at the moment, and that is the end of the report. Do you have any questions?
Questions, either.
Did I miss Charlotte's act on, uh, the expense page, yellow gray? But I mentioned you saying something about operation and maintenance of plants.
Right, so, uh, like you have more revenue in the other operating revenue, uh, because of those insurance proceeds, the ex, the offset of the expense is in the operations remains. Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions?
Maybe most of them approve.
We're intending motion to approve, is there a second in the financial report?
No second.
There's a second. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the, uh, college financial reports, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, sure, thank you very much. Chris, are you there?
I'm here.
Alright, very good. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Here to the president's report, and I will subway to Dr. Westman. Thank you, Mr. Care. We're going to start with Ms. Gail Tinsley coming forward and telling us about our college transfer fair from October twenty-second.
Yes, we did the college transfer fair, and we had it in the classroom lobby. We had beloved universities there and about seventy students that came through. Um, they were very happy about the flow of students, how these students actually stopped and talked to them. A lot of that has to do with, um, Mr. Adams and his academic life strategies class. He gives them ideas of, um, questions to ask those universities, you know, about their transfers, their scholarships, their tuition, those kinds of things. And of course, he gives them points for going to at least three different of those universities, but it makes them have, um, a more, they're more comfortable speaking to those, and a lot of them have built relationships with those transfer advisors who show up here, and they follow up with them, so it's a good opportunity for our students to learn about transferring.
You have a list of the schools that we're here for?
I do, um, kind of right with me, but, uh, we, we typically, so we had NSU, we had Mizzou, we had, um, we had, of course, the Bunsen Connecticut, Keno, um, Missouri State, um, Arkansas State. Or I can't remember, there's, there's a Arkansas Technical College. So, yeah, they're developed a variety of different, um, transfer opportunities, and we have an articulation agreement in some of the law and so.
Thank you. And now we'll talk about nursing job fairs. The chair of here is going to come forward and speak about that.
Hello. Uh, so I, Chair Lear, I am the director of the Director of Nursing Program. Um, and here, uh, I'll try to talk a little bit about what, um, our students did and why we have the job fair. Um, so last month, um, both our cohorts, Papa Love and Syson participated in, uh, this job fair. Um, we have a total of twenty-four, uh, practical nursing students here in Papa Love, which are those that are pictured there. Um, and then we also have seventeen, um, in Syson. So each job fair was held, um, at the prospective sites. Um, and at that, um, there were tons of employers that we bought in, um, to give the students a, um, opportunity to kind of see what's out there for them after they graduate. Um, so that includes, uh, long-term care facilities, uh, the hospital right here was, was there. Um, rehab, home health, behavioral health, everything that you can possibly think of, we had at both sites. Um, and what I will say is that, um, providing this opportunity gave the students, um, insight and kind of what to expect at those places that they might be employed at. But also, um, the students did get, um, a lot of the students got, uh, interview requests thereafter. So, um, a lot of the students already that are going to graduate this December are already ready to roll, um, for the job after graduation, so. Thank you.
What are you seeing as far as demand for board? And do we have enough students to fill the slots, or are we giving a lot more?
We, we do. We do have enough students. Um, primarily, our LPN students, um, are going to, like, home health. Um, they're going to the nursing homes, hospital, hmm, we, we don't have as much at the hospital, um, but the hospital's clinics. Um, the LPN students go there.
There's still a lot of them.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
So are we still running about a hundred percent employment?
Yes, absolutely we are.
Thank you, Miss Lear. Then on November first and second, we hosted our annual murder fifty-week dinner. We actually did something a little different this year. Uh, we hosted one, uh, as a dinner and one as a matinee the next day. Uh, Ms. Suzie Agnew directed the show cast and, uh, did an absolutely fantastic job with the performance. They were highly successful. Both were completely sold out and re-raised thirteen thousand dollars. That will go towards scholarship funding, so really successful event. Uh, and now I'm going to ask professors, Buddy and Cindy White, to come up and talk about our fall showcase and fall concert, which was outstanding.
Our student showcase was October twenty-eighth and included performances by student solos, the swing stations, the choir, and for the first time, the college jazz band. And then last night, we concluded our second major performance of the semester. Uh, November eighteenth, we had a program that started with our adjunct piano, uh, professor, Dr. Dan Coons on piano, doing a solo. Um, the college choir made up of students, uh, the jazz band and the symphonic band. Uh, the choir presented some traditional literature and contemporary arrangements, and one of the selections was Lovely Chance, uh, based on poetry Sarah T. Dale, who is a Missouri-born poet.
And the college jazz band performing mixed the traditional, contemporary, and Christmas selections. Uh, our band members are students and community members, and then our symphonic band, uh, one of the largest in our school's history and, uh, strongest, highest horsepower, uh, and topped off the evening performance. Our band consists of our own college students, uh, adult community members, area band directors, and music educators, and high school students. Our members range in age from fourteen to over eighty years old. It's a wealth of experience out of there. We have several families throughout the band. Uh, our Tewors College one, the band director, uh, Donnie Fox, director of Donovan, brings a bandload of students every Monday. Donovan doesn't have school on Mondays, and those kids show up, and they come to our person. And, uh, they're great kids. It's been a great job of Donovan, and, uh, the young kids just kind of add, uh, gusto to do the rest of the group. Uh, it's, uh, it's, it's amazing to see. Many of our high school, uh, performers have been selected for the area hall district, uh, high school band and jazz band. And, uh, as I said, it's a strong band. I have lots of ideas on what we're playing next semester. I'm ready to go, so, um. Thank you, Dr. Agnew, for supporting us and the board and giving us these great facilities, uh, to be allowed. We have a performance in acoustics first rate, uh, the band sounds great, and the choirs, uh, when we, when we move downstairs, you have fifty thousand square feet instead of three thousand, so we can, we can light it up. Yeah, good, good.
Uh, I've been to a lot, uh, showcases and concerts here, and I will tell you that last night's performance was absolutely outstanding. Uh, the level of challenge with the pieces you selected really showed the talent that you guys have developed and been able to pull in. It was one of your best showcases in, in concerts that I've seen. It, it was really a good night, so thank you so much for all you do. Uh, you remember.
We can find a place for you if you're nervous college.
Let's go, it's all in your room. We can do it.
Uh, if you're getting high school kids, give up their day off and four-day school week to come here, that's awesome. That's high praise. And they dress up. Wow, they have kind of burntless school clothes there in, in nice, nice outfits and just.
That's fantastic.
Our, our band concert, which is why I go to your being concerts.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you so much, thank you. And now we're going to have Pela Salazar and Ms. Gail Tinsley come up and talk about our Rocky's Angels initiative and our food drive.
Hello, uh, my name is Pela Salazar, and I work in the financial aid department, but I'm also fortunate to help with Rocky's Angels and our food pantry. So for the third year in a row, we are proud to support our students and their families through our Rocky's Angel program. This is a confidential vetted program that began in twenty twenty-three when we recognized that many of our students, uh, their needs kind of felt with outside the scope of existing community resources that offered, um, holiday support. We also saw students facing difficult choices where they were having to choose between continuing their education and supporting their families. So our Rocky's Angels are students who are committed to their education but are experiencing one or more significant barriers. These can include employment, um, lack of transportation, food insecurities, homelessness, uh, limited financial literacy, um, other challenges that can prevent them from completing their academic or training programs, but they're still showing up. They're facing these things, and they're going to classes. They're trying to walk across their stage, not only to benefit their future, but the future's on their families. Um, angels are now ready for adoption. We kicked this program off on Monday. Uh, we have approximately forty-eight angels this year that we're looking to provide for them. Um, we would like to already, uh, shout out to the Forward Direct, uh, Christian, First Christian Church, and the Bible Sunday School Class from Fellowship Church, uh, for already adopting our families on this first day. They literally call us waiting for these families to adopt. So we're, um, very happy to have so much support from the community in order for us to help these families.
Do you have a story? I, I have a story of a student. For about three years, I, I had a student, and, um, she was one of our non-traditional students and had a couple of children, and she, she did what she could. She, she lived out of town, and so there was transportation issues, you know, working at Walmart and trying to take care of those kids, and so she was adopted the first year that we did this, and, um, sorry, so, um, Fellowship Church adopted her and her family, her kids, and, um, she was crying out with her third child, and so she had just had her third child, and they lost, uh, one of their dogs, and so they had to move England family member into their garage. Well, it's December, and there's no heat in the garage, so, uh, the Sunday School class had, uh, so swiftly adopted them for that and, um, a wood stove, and then Chuck Strattling thought he was delivering the wood stove, but he was also installing it, so. So, but, but it was a good, it was a good thing, and, um, you know, so they had a good Christmas. They had heat and, and they had a place to stay and had Christmas for their children. They had this wonderful community then. I'm so happy to be part of it.
And then, um, a couple of other things for the food pantry. Uh, Kroger has been partnering with us recently. Um, thank, uh, Michelle Reynolds. We've kind of been working together on collaboration, trying to see how we can help these students. So now we are approved for community rewards program with Kroger, so you can go into your account and select three rivers as the recipient of your, um, digital rewards. So now that will go directly to the food pantry to help these students. We also have, um, we started with t-shirts for the food pantry that we are creating these seasonal Raiders t-shirts. We actually just started this for breast cancer, we're this last month, and we were able to deposit about four hundred dollars into our food pantry to support our students. So if you are interested, uh, Melody does have these forms if you would like a t-shirt. And then Kroger's also right now has a food drive for us, so it's till Friday, and you can drop off items, donations, that are also going to be helping our students and our Rocky's Angels. Any questions or anything? Alright, thank you.
So Rocky's Angels and the food drive, um, the food pantry is open anytime we are in direct support of any of our students that have food insecurities. Rocky's Angels is a Christmas drive to ensure that our students have the ability to provide a really nice Christmas for their kids, and we have a lot of students who are working really hard to make the ends meet, have a lot of challenges, and I would applaud everybody that's involved in this and the amount of time, effort, and money that our employees put up this time of year to ensure that these kids have a great holiday. Uh, it's, it's a big thing here, and they have done extremely great work to get community people involved, community members involved, local businesses, which has really accelerated the number of students that we can help, so, um, thank you all. Great job on all of that. Uh, we do have some upcoming events, so we have the Great American Smokeout from eight to five on the October twentieth in the Welcome Center and classroom lobby. Uh, Thanksgiving break, we will be closed all of next week in observance of Thanksgiving. Uh, this is the first year we've closed for the full week of Thanksgiving, uh, in lieu of a partial week this week and a partial week for fall break. Uh, then on November twenty-ninth, we're going to have a turkey trot, uh, that starts at twelve P.M. It's a three K to feed three R. Uh, participation is paid for by donation to the food pantry. Um, then Student Art Exhibit will be December first through the twelfth, uh, curated by our artist-in-resident, uh, Mr. Steve Whitworth. Uh, gallery open twelve to three, and then on December fifth, seven P.M. at the Tanning Fine Arts Center, we will have our first of two patrons' Christmas programs. Uh, this one's a huge show. We brought the humbug, uh, will be there. Tickets, fifteen dollars each. This is sponsored by Kissinger and Kirkman Investment Center. And, uh, December eleventh, two P.M., we will have our Fall Nurse Ting Ceremony. And then the Three Rivers College Community Choir will present Christmas at the Tanning for two shows, seven P.M. December thirteenth, two P.M. December fourteenth. Both of these are ten dollars each, and that event is sponsored by Boit Engineering out of Marion, Illinois. Boit is one of our alums and proud to be a supporter of our patron series. The Christmas break will be closed December twenty-second to January second. And then in January, from January twelfth to February thirteenth, we will have our next gallery show, Dave Carter, also curated by artist-in-resident, Mr. Steve Whitworth. Then on January twentieth, seven P.M. Tennant Center, the January, uh, patron show, Feeling Brummie, which is a salute to the sixties, uh, by the same man that brought us the piano man last year, so Jim Litter, uh, is, Litter is excellent. This will be a high-powered show, and that sir is the president's court. We do have executive session.
Would someone like to make a motion to go into executive session at this time?
Come in.
There is a motion, but is there a second? There is a second. Any discussion on this? This will be a voice, a vote.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson? Yes. Trustee Hager?
Yeah.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Uh.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are in executive session. Thank you for your attendance today. And, uh, we're at item number six. Item consideration discussion and vote. There's a couple of, uh, uh, policies here that were sent to us via email earlier in the preview. Dr. Pang, would you like to comment on those?
Uh, yes, the first I'm asking you to consider is student policy, two thousand one hundred and eighty, military service. Um, so previously, we altered the way incomplete grades function. This is nothing more than bringing this policy in line with the new practice.
Any questions on this? We will entertain a motion to approve that.
I like that one.
Here's the motion.
I.
Okay, this will be a roll call.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson? Yes. Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yeah.
Trustee Shaw?
Yeah.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Number two, consideration discussions and vote of GAP twelve hundred equal opportunity. Once again, Dr. Pang.
Yes, uh, the only change to this one is we are including in the, uh, policy reference to Missouri seven-one-one relay services.
Any questions on that? Will entertain a motion to approve that policy?
I'd like that motion to approve that.
Works for me.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson? Yes. Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Alrighty.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Then number three is consideration discussion, vote on audit resolution for the fiscal twenty twenty-five year. The audit committee met this morning, and, um, I probably, if someone knows, they may even need to make a motion on that, even on the audit committee.
I will make a motion that we accept the audit as presented with respect.
Yes, so.
That's pretty good, pretty good.
The audit is not completely final because the federal O and B has not issued the audit circular specifically detailing the items to be tested. Uh, our auditorium utilized, uh, last year's O and B circular because they are normally very little changes from year to year. However, until O and B issues that, which is delayed because of the forty-three day government shutdown, they cannot finalize the audit. So we are asking that you approve the audit provisional to that O and B circular be issued, given, and if no changes occur because of that, other than routine additional testing that do not alter the audit, that you empower us to then finalize it and post it as required.
Yes.
That's, yeah, that's kind of what I understand. There was no major concerns with the audit, so.
And in your motion, you need to ask that Dr. Pang's explanation be incorporated into the motion so that you all don't have to have another special meeting.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that Dr. Pang's explanation be incorporated into my question.
Do we have a second on that?
Yes.
Any more discussion on that? And this is a roll call.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson? Yes. Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
I think so.
Trustee Williams?
I'll, I'll say yes to Amber's fine motion.
Thank you, Chris.
Sorry to put you on the spot. Council committee membership. And we move on to item number seven, consideration, oh, hang on, holders, I missed one, number four. Consideration discussion vote on resolution called for trustee election sub-district one. And the motion is to accept the formal resolution calling for an election to be adopted, and Melody DuCote, the recording secretary, will be formally appointed to serve as the election authority. Would someone like to make that motion? To authorize the spring election?
Normally, I thought authority, authority always wins, but this time I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Meloncamp. Is there a second on that?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cooper, saying, oh, let's go. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this motion or Jonathan Geronimo? We will move forward with a roll call.
Trustee Pedersen?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yeah.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Moving on to number seven, consideration approval of all persons. Movement number seven, consideration approval of all personal actions associated documents.
No doubt here, I've been kind of quiet this, this meeting, but I think I would like to make a motion. I think I would like to make a motion to approve all personal actions and associated documents. They're in type two, here with forever.
And he's back. Motion had been made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Since there's no discussion, this will be a roll call.
Trustee Feathershaw?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Garrison?
Yes.
Trustee Fock?
Yep, first.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Anything else from anybody before we hit the cattle? Do note, we do not have a December meeting, the next time, uh, this board meeting will be next year, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-six. Will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye. Any question? Most of you.